The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:01. Secretary of Police, call roll.
Dennis Sabalski.
Here.
Kendra Barberina is here. Tim Boyd.
Here.
Bob Dorshovitz.
Here.
Gail Greger.
Here.
John Itzel.
Here.
Steve Postel.
Here.
And we have, is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight? I have no.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second. Moved by Commissioner Postel and supported by Commissioner Itzel to approve the agenda submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Dennis, hang on a second. Projector's not on.
Oh, okay.
You know what, that may have been.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 15th?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Greger. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And is there anyone here that wishes to have any comments to the commission on a non-agenda item? Something that's not on the agenda. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. Can I give you a minute, Bob?
Yeah, it was moved around earlier and sorry, I didn't notice. It got moved around earlier today. I apologize for that.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I should have tested it. Okay, folks, give me just a second. It's tough, yeah. Yeah, it's tough.
There you go. We'll change your name to Steve Jobs.
When in doubt, reboot. And if you push enough buttons, something will work.
Okay. Okay, we're moving on to application 2443, the Roots Montessori School. And Ms. Hall, your report.
Thank you, Chairman Sabalski. Good evening, Commissioners. This application is for a proposed Montessori school. This is located just north of M14, due east of Sheldon Road, in the Plymouth Executive Park. There's a property at the very end of that drive, on the east end, that has an existing office building that the applicant is proposing to occupy as a Montessori school. Currently, they are established in downtown Plymouth and have approximately 55 students enrolled. They are looking to expand with a goal of increasing their enrollment to 100 to 125 students. They aim to open in the fall of 2023. They would first occupy 4,000 square feet of the existing office building with an end goal of occupying the remaining 19,000 square feet as other leases in the building, and they would take them over. They're not proposing any structural changes to the exterior of the facility. They're only adding some security changes, such as locking systems and cameras at the entrance doors. There is an existing green space, open area directly east of the building, triangular shaped, and the applicant is proposing to fence in that area for outdoor play. The fence would be a standard four-foot aluminum fence, which is, it meets the standards for outdoor play areas for childcare facilities that are licensed by the state. The proposed equipment inside, while not decided at this time, will be no taller than eight feet in height, and any of the structures themselves will be earth tones in color. As a Montessori charter private school, they are required to seek special land use approval with the township, which is what the public hearing tonight is for. Unless there are other changes that are proposed to the site itself, in addition to the playground area, no site plan, formal site plan approval would be required. They could go through the building department with those permits. Our recommendation tonight is to grant special land use approval, and that is on our first page of our memo. Based on compliance with the special land use criteria of Section 2.7 of the zoning ordinance, there are a couple of findings of fact that we note in our report based on this approval recommendation. First, the use is no more intense than other existing uses in the vicinity or allowed in the MR, the mid-rise district, which is property zoned. So that would include hotels, event spaces, hospitals, and other research and office facilities. The proposed development complies with the zoning dimensional requirements of the mid-rise district. No natural features are proposed to be impacted. The site has adequate parking for the use and access from a major thoroughfare, Sheldon Road. The applicant notes in their narrative that with the amount of teachers and staff, only 20 parking spaces are needed. Based on the township's requirements for parking for educational facilities, 31 spaces are required. However, there's over 100 parking spaces surrounding this building that are available to them. So in either case, the availability of parking is exceeded. Another finding is that the school is licensed through the state of Michigan. This is a requirement of the zoning ordinance and something that will have to be produced to the building department for their occupancy. So based on those findings, we recommend special land use approval following the public hearing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, let me see. And the fire department didn't have to look at this because of the change in the use, or?
They, yeah, they have no concerns with this.
Oh, okay.
They'll do the interior building inspection if it gets to that point.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Do you have anything to say or comments if you step up to the podium? Yes, please, thank you.
We just wanted to really appreciate your consideration. One of the things that we like to highlight with our organization is a 501(c)(3), and so we're really looking to provide really exemplary education to families from all different income levels. And this is really a wonderful facility and location.
Can you please introduce yourself and tell us what you do for the school?
Sure, my name's Mark Bartlett. I'm the chairman of the board. My wife, Deb Bartlett, is the executive who oversees the operations of the school.
What grade is it?
So it's Montessori, it starts at three years old and goes through the equivalent of sixth grade.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Okay, well, thank you. And we will open the public hearing at 7:11. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this application? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:12. Any comments, concerns, questions from the commission? If not, are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant special land use approval for the Montessori school at 14, 14492 Sheldon Road for PC application 2443, based upon compliance with the special land use criteria of Section 2.7 of the zoning ordinance.
And the findings of fact contained in the?
And the findings of fact contained in the McKenna report.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by, excuse me, by Commissioner Boyd to approve said application. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, and good luck to you. Next, we have the application for the Red Olive, the ARC signage. And, let's see. Do we have the planners' report?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. This is the same report that was provided at the June meeting. We haven't received updated drawings, but believe the applicant is in attendance tonight and can speak to this item. So they are proposing to replace and update the existing monument sign at 1051 Ann Arbor Road in front of the multi-tenant commercial plaza with Red Olive. We do recommend approval contingent that since there are four potential different tenant signs on this multi-tenant monument sign, that at least, it's a possibility that five fonts may occupy the sign cabinet as presented, where there's a maximum lettering style of just two. So if you find that acceptable, then it would be a recommendation to approve. The fonts would mirror the established logos of the four different tenants that occupy the space.
And the applicant is here? You want to step up and have anything to say?
Hello, thanks for having us here. My name is Jayd Sia. I represent the Red Olive. And, yeah, what we're proposing is we'd like to, since all the parking for that plaza is in the back of the building, it's been very hard for us for people driving by that. They can't, they miss the businesses, so we would like to have our names on the monument that's there. And I have a couple updated. I can pass these out, or I can send you a file, but whatever it is, whatever it needs to be, we'll get it done.
Are there different versions?
Yeah.
Of these, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's got two fonts, different colors.
Okay, so there's.
Whatever's required, we're willing to.
Several different versions. Yeah.
Would help increase the visibility because that entire plaza is, the signs that are on the building, during summertime when the trees bloom, all the signs are hidden behind them.
So your sign will say, will have the words tenant space for the?
No, there's an empty unit there, so whatever it's, it's not, it will have the new, the new name in there. But it will be empty for the time being.
It will be what?
There won't, there won't be.
Not named there or anything?
Yeah, there will not be a name.
Not even tenant space, or?
No.
Oh, okay.
You own the building?
I don't. But we have approval from the landlord. He said, whatever you need to do, I'm willing to help out. I want to make sure you guys are successful.
Commissioners invited to provide their feedback on the colors of the presentation. Okay, which means the two of us, we like the colored one better.
So do I.
I had my notes about the bright white background.
I think the colored one looks nicer.
What do you think, Gail?
I like the colored one.
The color?
Yes.
The color? Okay, any other comments or questions, concerns?
Which one is your first choice?
I like the colored one. That's the first one we proposed, but we said, I think it was a maximum of two fonts, all the same colors. That's why we came up with a couple different ones, you see. But I think the first one looks the best, classiest.
The white often can be quite blurry, you know, especially where it's going to be positioned along the road. The color sort of softens it, and I presume it somewhat goes with whatever color scheme those tenants use in their advertisements or stationery.
Right, it's all more branding to each space on its own, right?
Okay.
What about confined, though, with our zoning ordinance with all the colors? Do you have any comments on that, Laura?
The ordinance states that no more than three colors may be used per sign in one uniform back, background color. Black and white are not, are considered colors. But established company logos are exempt from color limitations.
So you, so they are part of their branding?
The logo?
The colors, the background.
The colors, yes, yeah. Like the olive and Red Olive and, I mean, the other one would be just US mattress, the US part. I mean, if we have to move the olive out of the Red Olive, that's, that's not a problem, but I, I think it looks better with it.
If it can have all these colors.
The background colors.
Yeah, I'm talking more about the background color. Yeah, we're talking more about the background. I mean, did you just pick those colors, or these tenants have feedback on the, on the background color?
Well, the sign company that I heard, he just followed whatever was on the existing signs, the colors that are on there right now. But, I mean, if we need to change them, we can change them, we're not set to it.
Bob, can you pull up the front facade of that building?
I prefer the color, though, over the glowing white. Like, the sign across the street, the Applied Fitness Solutions.
Commissioner, can you say that again? I missed, I missed your point.
I prefer the colors, though, compared to the white background. For example, the Applied Fitness Solutions sign that's right across the street, north of Burger King. They have a white background and it's just glaringly, it's an, looks like a beacon at night.
The true with the Bomba Specialty Store that's in the, near Sheldon and Ann Arbor Road. You know where the gas station is in CVS?
Where's the sign?
So the Wellness Center and US Mattress, they're, they're white on the, on the building, correct?
Yes, on the building, believe so.
Which is why they picked it, why you chose, is that why you chose a colored background, then? So.
It's hard to see because of the tree.
Because of the trees, yeah.
Right, and it's even, the trees are a lot bigger now. Can't even see it that much.
Where's the sign go again?
You already have a monument sign, right?
Yes.
Is that where it would go? Same height, same base?
Yeah, it would sit right on the brick.
Could you say it's going to be taller?
But it's still within the zoning guidelines, correct?
So it's going to replace this sign?
Correct.
The last meeting, one of you asked about the totem sign on Beck Road, north of M14, where we had the McDonald's, the Holiday Express.
Yeah.
And the Starlock. I've got this on my cell phone. I took the picture today, I'll pass it down, but you can see that there's one, two, three, four, five, at least five different colors. And in terms of fonts, one, two, three, four, again, probably five different fonts. My question, Laura, is there anything on the Ann Arbor Road corridor, signage restrictions that would be different than that totem on Beck Road?
The zoning classifications are different. This is the ARC, and then the other is the general commercial district. I can quickly compare the two.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's good, thank you, ma'am.
That's the one.
That's also a PUD, right?
It is. So it's, so it's ARC is the difference.
So I missed part of that discussion, so the color limitations are only in the ARC district?
Yes.
I don't, I don't think it's a problem.
I don't think it's a distraction for drivers.
Do we have the, do we have the authority to make that decision, Laura?
Yep.
We do? Okay. Questionary.
US mattress is branded in a purple and white signage.
Well, once you go inside the store, that's their, that's their colors, yeah. Honestly, I mean, the tenants are not very picky about what's on there, but that's what we'd like to have to make it look nicer, but whatever needs to be, we can do.
So if you went with this sign, what would be in between here? Is this all one flat panel with different colors? Or is this different, four different segments?
I believe that's four different segments on there.
You can just slide in the tenant's names if they.
Yes.
Move out or whatever.
Yep, I, I mean, I have my sign gentleman, he's here, if you have any questions for him, he can answer those.
Hello?
Hi, yeah, come on up.
Hello, thank you, my name is Marcus Graham with Signs by Tomorrow in Livonia. I believe you asked the question, how are they separated? Each one is individually paneled with divider bars.
Okay.
Normally, I mean, you can put them all in one panel, but the correct way to do it is with divider bars.
Okay, so there'll be some sort of a division in between each of these?
Yes.
Okay, I like that better.
Yes, and each color that's there is represented as that particular business colors.
Okay.
So it's not something that we chose, and that's US, what is it?
Mattress.
Yes, mattress, that's the colors. And the Wellness as well. So in the middle one, it's just, we just made it gray so that it don't over, put a white panel there and just over, just a lot brighter than the other panels because the background colors are, well, the backgrounds have color to them.
So in theory, if another tenant moves into that space, then their branded colors and logo would be in that placeholder, whatever that placeholder is now.
We tried to keep the fonts very similar.
So Laura, if, if another tenant comes in, does that, is that going to come before us every time?
No, you'd be approving that fourth tenant slot.
Okay.
To be whatever color their.
What their, their branding colors are. Okay.
I prefer the colored background over the bright white. I think it looks classier.
That's sort of the consensus of the group. I think it makes it more readable, actually. I think if it were just one color, not the white, but if they chose a light blue and then there's, you know, the potential contrasting colors, you know, with different tenants. This way, the sign represents their brand, so you would think the colors would, would be readable with each other. All right. Any other questions or concerns? Are we ready for a motion?
Sure.
I move that we approve application number 2440, Red Olive ARC signage is found in the planners' report.
There's support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Itzel and supported by Commissioner Postle to approve the signage for application 20, 2440. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the application 2440, or, yeah, 2444, the Plymouth Walk PUD. Ms. Hall, you have your planning report.
Thanks, everyone. So, sorry. Me reading this one. Thank you for taking the time to, first of all, read this lengthy report. We took a lot of time investigating this first site plan submittal. This has been before us since October through the initial PUD option process, which means that, just to summarize, back in October, the Planning Commission held the PUD option hearing amid a motion to postpone it. Then, a few months later, they recommended approval of the PUD option to the Board of Trustees. On April 27th, the Board of Trustees then approved the PUD option, which meant that this project moved on to the site plan phase. Today before you is the initial site plan submitted by Pomeroy and Toll Development for the Elks Lodge site, also known as the Plymouth Walk PUD. To summarize, this is a 33-acre site, previously the Wykoff Steel Site, as well as the Elks Lodge site. And the proposed development includes 6.14 acres of building, 16.99 acres of landscape space, and 10.51 acres of parking, right-of-way, and other paved area. In total, there are 103 townhomes and nearly 400 apartments, including 118 one-bedroom, 133 two-bedroom, and 15 three-bedroom apartments. To give you a quick summary before we get into my report, Planning reviewed this, and we are recommending revisions in regards to landscaping, pedestrian network, parking, street lighting, signage, and architectural design on the townhomes. We are recommending tonight that the Planning Commission grant tentative approval and give guidance to the applicant about how it can make changes to meet these requested revisions and all other codes of the Planning Commission. So if you would all turn to page, I think it's marked as page seven for some reason. Apologies, I think the page number's got messed up. But it's page three of the report. Previously, as has been discussed, the developer has agreed to pave the roadways in the neighborhood to the north, as was discussed at the Board of Trustees. Since we have covered this item on the paving in the past, I'm going to move on to the traffic plumbing item, which is the first new thing on the site plan before you today. So as it is currently presented, the site plan proposes two neck downs. These are also called pinch points. You can use whatever term you feel like. It's when you bump out the side of the road and it goes into the right-of-way. This creates a perceived narrowing of the lane and causes drivers to drive slower. So, you know, if you're driving through a really tight space, naturally you drive slower. You don't try to scrape your wheels on the curb, and that's effectively what a neck down does. It slows traffic by pinching it visually for drivers. The narrower the lane, the less room for error. Further notes on this matter can be subject to the review of the township engineer in terms of traffic flow and actual. terms of traffic flow and actual geographic speeds. The project site plan also still includes a 26-foot fire lane provided throughout the site for emergency vehicle access, and the fire department had no comments on the fire access as proposed in the site plan. They sent back their memo, said it looks good, and that's why they're not here today. So if you have any questions for the fire department, we can record them and direct them to them later. The next section that I'm going to draw your attention to is vehicle and bicycle parking. As mentioned in the PUD option, Planning is of the opinion that the proposed site exceeds the parking that is necessary for the site itself by about 61 spaces, or 65 at a maximum. You have before you several drawings that I have dropped off. We noticed when we completed this memo that by accident some of the drawings lost their colored boxes and circles on top, and we apologize about that. That was when we were moving around the items in the memo. So these are the correct drawings printed out in front of you, and Bob, I gave them to you on a blue flat screen. But I just wanted to draw your attention to that, and that way you can display them for the public as well. But on the second page of drawings I've provided to you, there is a full site plan. It's got orange circles and red lines on it. Those red lines are where we are recommending that the 61 parking spaces be removed, and those are strategic. Those locations were chosen because they would increase open space if those particular spaces were removed, rather than just removing 61 wherever on the site. So these ones do serve the purpose of enhancing open space. If the applicant were to remove 61 spaces, this would increase the total open space by 0.7%, approximately 10,200 square feet, and would increase the overall open space planning and tree preservation flexibility. This is using national standards for the parking that is in demand for a suburban development of this site. Next, we have bicycle parking. So as the site plan is currently proposed, there is no bicycle parking on the site. I realize those, that if you've got kids, or if you have relatives, or if you like to bike, bicycle parking is really important, especially in apartments, you don't want to have to lock your bike up to the third floor or chain it to a tree outside, and it just becomes clutter for everyone else. So we are recommending that bike parking spaces be included throughout the site. On the map, the same one that has the red lines for the parking removals, you'll see orange circles, and that's what we're recommending that bicycle parking be locked in.
What did it question, what did it mean locking bikes to trees and raisins?
Rails.
Oh, it says raisins.
It said raisins. Railings. They meant to say railings, not raisins. Thank you, Bob. That's one of the best keywords in the domain.
I thought maybe that was a term.
Railings. My apologies.
No problem. Spell check. Auto correct, I mean.
And for all bike parking that we are recommending, we included specifications for what the bike parking should be constructed as, and those specifications are intended to make sure that the bike parking facilities, A, last as long as they possibly can without having to be replaced, and B, result in no damage to the actual bicycles themselves. Good bike parking always has two points of contact for a bicycle, so when you have the loop, you usually lean the bike against it and it's contacting in two places, and that keeps bikes from falling over, getting their wheels bent, and generally just becoming a nuisance for everyone. So that's why we're recommending that standard of bike parking. Then on page, what is marked as page 10, that I believe is called Item 4, under Architectural Design, following our review, we have found that the open space facing side of the townhomes, meaning the backside of the townhomes that faces the collective open space, is lacking in detail compared to both the surrounding area and the apartments in the proposed project. Details would be improved by adding the same black interior frames that were used on the front windows to the rear windows. So in your packet, you have an image representing the back of the townhomes and the front, and you'll see on the front renderings, there's these inner black frames on the windows that add that detail in depth, and those are absent from the back windows. Additionally, we believe that carrying the paneling, the vertical paneling that is on the front of the facade to the rear first-floor bumpout would add that architectural variety. And some of you may be wondering why it's this important, because all the segments of the townhomes face each other's backyards, so creating that architectural variety is important for those people using the backs of their homes. We also find that the patios are low in functionality in their current skate because they do not have stairs, which prevents people from directly using their own open space. It's recommending that the patios be revised, and you closely remember those at Beacon Hollow, which have direct access. So it's a little dark in the printout, but Beacon Hollow has these, you know, railings and just three steps down that let you use the open space in the backyard, and there are similar arrangements, condominiums, apartments, those sorts of things, and we're recommending that a similar functionality be added to these patios. Then on page 11, Item 5, Landscaping. So this segment of the report is divided by each individual open space located within the development. The first one I'm going to address is the eastern park area. When I say eastern park area, I mean the area on the eastern side of the center spine road, where the backs of the townhomes abut that curvy-shaped park loop. Yeah, that top one there, Bob? It's a little bit. Yep, right there. So I'm just making sure that I didn't have a different drawing to show you. Okay, yep, the drawing in the memorandum is good for this one. So for the eastern park area, we recommend that additional deciduous trees and perennial shrubs be planted to provide privacy for the residents that directly abut the park and noted in that green shape that you're seeing on the screen right there. As it stands, there's just open lawn between the people in those particular townhomes and the park that is for public use, so adding some more deciduous trees that will grow into greater shade and perennial shrubs that would add a little bit of buffering for those individuals is desirable. Similarly, park area west, which is the square park area on the opposite side of the spine road, we are recommending that more mature trees be added in the green R spaces to add that shade over time as they mature. And we're also recommending that the benches that are currently proposed be staggered to provide more privacy. You know, not everyone wants to sit right across from somebody else using the same lunch, so we're recommending they be staggered. And in that image, it does say that the benches are circled in orange. We realize that those orange circles got lost in our memo, so this printout I gave you demonstrates this bench location and these orange circles.
And you're finished, right?
Well, we're going to keep going.
Pardon?
There's a few more pages to go through.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to give it my chance to find the right page.
Oh, okay.
Okay, great. Are we ready to move on to the next page, Mark Park Space? So this one similarly got misprinted, and I apologize. And for those of you sitting in the public, we will pull up our drawings for all of your benefit in just a moment. This civic space is on this printout here. The correct one should have a purple spoolie line through it, an orange circle, and the screen black in the center. And that corresponds to the colors in our text recommendation. So for this civic space, which is labeled as civic space rather than park on the site plan, we recommend that the benches, again, be staggered to provide the users with more privacy and that additional trees be added currently uncovered portion of the park to ensure it de-shade trees over time. Further, we recommend that the sidewalk that runs along the spine road be diverted through the park to make the path more dynamic for users, as denoted in purple. So what we're proposing is that the path be relocated to this winding shape through the park to make it more interesting for joggers, people using the park, anyone traversing through it, rather than having to walk right alongside the roadway. It's an advantageous place to keep people further away from the cars and enjoy the inside portion of the park. Lastly, we have the dog park. The dog park is at the rear of the site, right there. And our recommendation for the dog park is that two benches be added, as denoted in blue, and that's because, you know, your dog may be out there longer than you want to be out there, and taking a seat is a nice feature to have. All right. The next section is tree preservation and replacement. We realize that in your memo, the dog park label accidentally obscured the tree table, so that has now been included for you on this page of the printout, the complete numerous. So this one is the full site plan that has the red lines and the large blue line around the tree preservation figures, and we've included the table here at the bottom so that you can see that the total trees to be removed is 577. The total trees to be added is 1,457, which results in a net tree change of 880 nutrients. We just wanted to specify that since it was accidentally obscured in the memo. So we should also note that the tree preservation figure on the site plan specified that 44 trees to be or likely to be preserved. This figure is not correct. We're asking that the applicant specify the correct tree preservation counts. I believe it was just an error, but you can see on the site plan that it's more than 44 trees. So we're asking for that correction. Next, we are recommending that the area denoted in blue on this tree preservation diagram that has the blue and red lines be extended to allow for the preservation of more existing trees along the full eastern border of the site, so where most trees are already proposed to be preserved, extending that just a little bit to improve that buffer as noted below. We also are recommending that special efforts be made to preserve the 88-inch diameter red oak tree that is currently existing on the site, shown right. And if that was a geographic error and is not 88 inches wide, you have your landscape architect to tell us, but incidentally it does seem 88 inches wide. This is one of the largest trees possibly in the township, if that is its indeed width as well as on the site, and we believe that it could be preserved through the movement of one of the townhome units to a different location on the site, which would be beneficial for all users of the site and all members of the township.
Move the trees?
No, no, no.
I'll move the building.
Yeah.
On your map, is that the green or the orange?
That's the green.
The green.
Yeah.
Right.
So on the site plan, it kind of stands out from all the other trees. If you received it, it's much more larger circle than anything else on there, and right now it kind of sits in, there's a gap between two of the townhomes trees, sort of in that gap, but it's also sort of overlapping one of the townhomes. So we're recommending that that be relocated to accommodate the preservation of that tree. Then lastly, we have notes on the construction impacts on trees. So that's what this diagram is roughly showing you, the ones with the red lines and the blue lines around the tree preservation. In numerous areas throughout the site plan, the proposed buildings and sidewalks are located too close to the trees that are identified to be preserved. This proximity is likely to lead to the death of the tree roots during construction and the loss of the tree. These areas are roughly outlined on this diagram, so keep in mind, I did not do these lines to scale, but they are to illustrate the areas in the site plan where the trees are too close to the preservation boundary and could be impacted negatively by construction. We are recommending that the applicant revise the landscaping plan using the Mississippi State Extensions Guide on Tree Construction to ensure that adequate buffers are provided to ensure the survival of all trees. All right. Continuing on, we now have additional notes on landscaping. We are recommending that the eastern perimeter of the site, which is the site with the largest amount of tree preservation, that the ground cover be left natural rather than replaced with an irrigated seed lawn mix to provide some enhanced buffer between the neighboring single-family homes and the proposed development. This would also help create a small valuable corridor running along the entirety of the site, which could support small mammals and fowl. As we know, this site is currently home to many forms of urban wildlife, and creating something that would at least help preserve their livelihoods and perhaps support pollinators is beneficial to the township. Similarly, to improve buffering wildlife, we recommend the same cements be applied along the northern perimeter of the site. All right. Lastly, fencing. As is currently proposed, the far northeast corner of the site has a white vinyl fence. We recommend that this fence be changed to brown or other dark neutral tone so it doesn't, you know, glare quite so much into the backyards and the people whose homes are directly to the north, and also that this fence be raised three inches off the ground to allow for the passage of stormwater and small wildlife underneath. So if you put the fence right at the ground level, you get more weed growth next to it, it's harder to maintain, stormwater gets diverted and eventually starts to erode. We're recommending that it be raised about this far off the ground to prevent those issues from happening. Bob, could you scroll on to page 15, which sites with stormwater? Thank you. This one is a small note. I believe the wrong pattern is used in the legend in the site plan. In the legend, there is a pattern for stormwater cements, and I believe that was probably supposed to be used around the stormwater detention grounds, but accidentally the one pattern was applied, so we're asking that be converted. Lastly, or sorry, second to lastly, lighting. So we reviewed the proposed lighting on the site plan. As it currently stands, the site plan proposes to have streetlights located roughly over 90 feet along the west side of the spine road, but also intermittently throughout the parking lots of the apartment buildings. This is sufficient for the site, but is not sufficient for the mid-block crosswalk locations, so the mid-block crosswalks don't have stop signs at all of them, which means that having good lighting that makes it safe for pedestrians is especially important for people driving in late. So we are recommending that full pole, non-four-way stops, meaning stops that do not have a stop sign at every single approach, but the streetlights be placed on the same side of the street as the oncoming traffic, roughly 0.5 to 1 pole lengths before the sidewalk. This is widely considered the safest placement for a sidewalk. It illuminates pedestrians the best and makes sure that approaching cars can see anything that is inside of the roadway with the greatest eye contact. We are also asking that the photometric plan provide the locks, which is the vertical units that the roadway lighting will provide, and asks for us to determine whether or not the pedestrian is sufficiently illuminated in the crosswalk. Further, the current site plan does not propose to be lighting in the townhome or park portions of the development. With that said, for the townhome side of the development, we are recommending that one streetlight be added at each of the internal intersections, so there's two striped intersections in the townhome side. Currently, there's no lighting proposed. We're asking that one streetlight be added at each of those for safety, and also that two streetlights be added along paths of the restaurant. All right, Bob, let's go to the next page. In terms of signage, I will defer in many ways to the township engineer for signage. Signage for roadways is regulated by the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control and Design, but in this circumstance, we have one note, and Adam, please correct me if this is right. We are recommending that additional yield signs be added beneath the crosswalk signs to make it clear for drivers that they must yield to pedestrians. So it's state law that all vehicles traffic should yield to pedestrians when they are adjacent to a crosswalk and using an intersection, but many drivers in the state of Michigan don't know that that's the law, as we all know, whether we're driving or using a crosswalk. And adding those yield signs can be a good reminder that pedestrians are the ones that are coming first. And finally, site history. Previously, at the very beginning of this process in October, it was discussed that there be some sort of mention of the history of the site, and we are recommending that a small freestanding metal plaque sign acknowledging the history be added to the civic space on the southwest side of the spine road. We have written some example inscription here with our brief history of the Wykoff Steel Site. This is not necessarily the actual language we are proposing for such a sign. We believe that it would be better that, you know, the actual text to the sign go for the historic district mission so that they can help with the research on the site and be able to define the slitters on the text for the sign. And that is all. A gist of the phone.
All right. Thank you very much for walking us through that. So we have the engineer report?
Yes. Part of this development, there will be public water main and public sanitary sewer built on the site. The water main and sanitary sewer will either be captured within the proposed roadway runways or it'll be encaptured in an easement dedicated to the township. Both of these utilities will eventually need to be reviewed and approved by Eagles for construction, but that will be at a later date. The proposed water main is going to connect at three different locations and looping within the development itself. There's, I believe, one proposed connection to the north and two to the south along Gold Arbor and Ann Arbor Road. Meanwhile, the sanitary sewer will eventually connect to the existing sanitary sewer in Ann Arbor Road right-of-way. Ann Arbor Road right away. The storm drainage will be, eventually need to be reviewed and approved by Wayne County up to their standards, but the proposed detention is going to be handled by two detention basins in the southeast portion of the sites. And the site access is going to be off of the existing Gold Arbor roadway and connect to Perro Drive to the north. Our connection to Gold Arbor to the south is shown in the plans, but the proposed connection to the north of Perro Drive is not shown at this time. It is noted in the plans that this connection will be part of a separate design package that's also going to include the neighborhood, or the design of the neighborhood to the north, and those designs will be up to both township and Wayne County standards. As part of the roadway, there will be a few lines for the sidewalks and a few line pathways on either side of the roads. It is noted that in the site narrative, provided with the, with this package, that this is a private road. This private road does exceed 750 feet, which will require special approval per the township ordinance, but based on the geometry that engineer reviewed, we promote an approval of this roadway. And as noted in the planning report offers its signage, all site signage will have to meet the requirements aligned and close township's, close township design standards, I believe, Wayne County Department and Michigan Manual of Uniform Traffic. These, I think that, as we review, we promote approval of the site plan as shown, but we will need to dive deeper into the utilities and the roadway engineering review at a further time.
And the planning report mentions that it, it's in your report, but it wasn't in the reports. Further discussion on this pinch point or hourglass, you know, bump in for, as a traffic calming instrument? Do you have anything to add to that?
We're in agreement of implementing those traffic calming devices to slow anyone that thinks they can possibly cut through or even travel through the main Spine Road. Those type of calming devices are used in other communities to feel like the road is coming down on you a little bit. Meanwhile, you still have plenty of maneuverability on the roadway in itself. Our traffic team has reviewed the roadway and has approved all measures that are shown on the site plan currently.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we have a report from the fire department, as indicated earlier. They have no concerns about the development from a public safety perspective, and applicants are here.
Oh, Dennis?
Yes.
Can we put up the correct drawings that the planning department did first, just for the public to see them?
Yeah.
Bob, do you think you could pull those up from our folder?
Are they on the flash drive?
Mm-hmm. Drawings on site plan, please. So this one is the same as it was in the memorandum, but just for the benefit of everyone here, the blue lines that you're seeing on the far side of the apartments is where the planning department is recommending that sidewalk be installed to create a complete sidewalk network. The orange boxes are areas that did not have crosswalk striping on the site plan, and again, we are requesting that complete sidewalk striping be included throughout to ensure the safety of pedestrians. The blue box is a crosswalk that is kind of at a diagonal angle right now that could be better aligned to be directly, you know, straight across just for the safety of pedestrians. The green squiggly line is the same thing that we were mentioning on our Parkland recommendations of moving that sidewalk to the interior of the site so that it's more dynamic. And lastly, the little red Xs are over the eight parking spaces that would kind of cause an interruption of that complete sidewalk network. As we've mentioned, the site has more than enough parking, and removing those eight spaces would allow for a more direct flow of the sidewalk. Lastly, those two purple boxes are next to the dog park. As it stands, there is no striped crosswalk to the dog park, and we're recommending that striping be added, just so everyone knows that pedestrians are going to be crossing through the portion of the drive aisle to reach that dog park at the back and can do so safely. Can you go to the next one, Bob? This is our parking recommendations. The lines in red are the 61 spaces that could be removed and still meet the national standards for the parking demand for this type of land use. And the orange circles that you're seeing are locations that would be ideal for bicycle racks to serve apartment users, park visitors, anyone else that is biking to the site, either to recreate or to, because they live on the site. Yeah, I've got them there for you in spite. You don't have to do them all, don't worry.
Right.
All right. Can you go to the next one, Bob? So this is the same as in the memorandum. The green space is where we're recommending adding some more trees to buffer those homes from the park. If I could just scroll down, Bob. That one is, again, two recommendation areas in green and staggered benches that are currently circled in orange. Let's go into the last one, Bob. And finally, this one, you'll see the purple path is our proposed rough alignment of where the sidewalk could run through this park to make it more dynamic for drivers and park users. Additional trees could be added in the green space, and once again, the benches circled in orange would be more appropriate staggered to allow for privacy of users. All right. Thanks, Dennis.
Okay. And the applicant is here. The floor is yours. Do you have anything, any comments or?
I think we're good.
You are? Okay. So, comments from the commission, questions, concerns?
I'm curious about developers, builders, what you feel about these suggestions. Is there any of them that are problematic or questioned?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. For those of you who recall, Alex Martin, I'm the president for the Midwest Division for Toll Brothers. So I'll be speaking to the condominium or townhome component of the project. Overall, staff comments were, I think, intelligent, made sense, logical. I would say 99% in support of all of them. I think the two ones we would like to discuss, or at least contemplate as a group, would be, the first one is related to the streetlights within the townhome section. We typically don't install streetlights for a very specific reason. All of our homes are built with photo cell coach lights on the garages. They're hardwired, and our HOA documents don't allow that to be turned off. You can't physically turn it off, and if you wanted to pay to rewire it, the HOA has rules and regulations that, you know, forbid it and require you to reverse it back. We do that in lieu of streetlights because, one, streetlights aren't very aesthetically pleasing, whether it's nighttime or daytime. We like the view corridors. Driving down the street, you see coach lights at a softer light, you know, as opposed to a harsh light that a streetlight creates. It also certainly reduces the, you know, light pollution. So we prefer that. We were very confident provides adequate light at crossings and whatnot. That would be our preference, you know, if streetlights are required. Fine, we will go that route. We just think photo cell lights on the garage fronts is far more pleasing and attains the same goal of creating an appropriately lighted area for safety and vehicular movement and things of that nature. So that would be the first item. The second one is addressing black windows on all four sides of the homes. We typically do not do that for two reasons. The primary one being sourcing the windows, you know, even prior to COVID, they're very difficult to get. While they look beautiful and we love them, they are very hard to get, so we try to limit the impact of delays and issues with them, especially, not so much for building the homes, but God forbid you do have any warranty issues. It takes quite a bit of time to replace those windows. But what we do do is in what we call high-visibility areas, you know, for instance, if you're coming up, it's not a good site plan up, but if you're coming from south to north on the main connector road, where you would see a side of a unit or a rear of the unit from any of the roads, we would typically wrap the windows around in those areas because it would look better if you see black windows in the front, also see them on the sides when you can see the side of the home or the rear of the home. But due to the reasons I mentioned before, we typically do not install the windows on all sides because in addition to getting them, you know, to be quite frank, they're very expensive to the tune of several thousand dollars per house. So we typically don't put them on, you know, and we don't see an issue with that with our consumers. But again, those high-visibility areas, we absolutely would. We'd probably have the next iteration denote those high-visibility homes, so we're on the same page as to what would if we had black windows. But otherwise, on the townhome component of the project, we thought the notes were thorough and made complete sense and improved the project.
Are you saying black windows or black windows?
Black, the color black.
The color black.
Yeah. I don't know if you want to go back to the elevation pictures, but it shows that. It goes with the architectural style of the homes. They're black on the fronts and then the rears are whites, are white.
Do the townhomes get a rear spigot?
A rear what?
Spigot?
The host spigot?
Yeah.
Yes, yep. We put one in the garage or in the front of the home and one in the rear.
On the, the lighting, you know, the coach lights that you were talking about, so does the HOA regulate the lumens and the Kelvins counts on those lights?
Yes, they do.
They do? So it's all consistent? So no one's going to have the cool white and the warm white?
Yes.
All of that?
We're pretty neurotic in that. I'd rather have no lights than lights that look different colors. Plus, they're LED lights, so like, they'll last for quite some time.
Any thoughts to where, like, a school bus stop would go?
The school system typically dictates that. My guess is they would come into here, sorry, not that tall, but into the community on the townhomes.
I'm just thinking it may be something that...
Children, not on the connector road. But I would have to defer to the school district on that.
It may be something to at least look at with a development this size. I mean, school buses come at quarter to six in the morning for the high school, and then they go till probably 4:30, quarter to five at night, or elementary. So if there is a way to find out where that bus stop might be, maybe have some benches, there's going to be a lot of parents coming down there, walking there to meet the bus. And also keeping in mind that, like, quarter to six in the morning is cold and dark, and there will be high school kids.
Yep. Absolutely. That's very good point.
Similar question about...
I didn't quite follow the, oh, sorry. Why the black windows are so difficult to get? Because if you ordered them, you'd order them and that would be part of your construction.
They typically, it's not that you can't get them, it's that they're not a, the window manufacturers produce the most windows that are most commonly purchased and installed. That would be white windows. So, and like, anything that you buy that's out of cycle, you know, try to get a Sub-Zero or Wolf refrigerator today. They don't make a whole lot of those. They're really difficult to get, let alone a normal refrigerator. So it's just out of cycle, and the lead times are significantly longer. Today, I believe they're over 20 weeks to get black windows, or about 16 or 17 weeks to get white ones today.
What makes them so, so much, why are they, why are they so much more expensive?
Like anything else, it's the same reason. What they mass produce is what they deliver and have the best pricing. Like any manufacturing line, they have to re-rig their line to run for black windows. It's all extruded material, so they have to rerun their lines and prepare it, and then run for black off-cycle from white, and then they have to clear it before doing so. It's my understanding they have to clean that out to get all the white material out, and then when they're done with the black run, they have to do the same. So they charge for that.
I have a question or a concern regarding the tree preservation plan. And if, Bob, you could bring up the page, I'd appreciate it. As you know, part of the PUD criteria is number three, which involves preserving natural assets. The present plan, if you go back into this document, which he's pulling up here, this is the tree preservation plan. Over on the right, there's a summary, several summary charts. Keep going down.
Down one.
That's, I think it's the prior page, Bob, actually. While he's bringing that up, there's a chart there that has discusses heritage tree removals and replacements. Now, heritage trees, again, are trees that are 18 inches or wider at the four-foot level above ground, and they are trees of preferred species. So these are really big trees that ideally we would want to save. The chart shows that on the site now, the current site, is that there's 161 heritage trees. Yeah, if you just go up a little bit, that's the right page. Going up, don't worry. There you go. No, I'm sorry, one more, one more box. There you are. Okay, so there are a total of 161 heritage trees on the site. This chart then says that of that 161, the way I read this, is that 155 of those trees would be removed, which would leave us with a total of six heritage trees on the entire site. That's about a 4% retention of heritage trees. I don't believe that that meets the PUD criteria for preservation of natural assets. Actually, I don't believe it comes even close to it. And I think that as a PUD, part of the criteria should be that we try to look at heritage trees, and to the extent that's reasonable, try to preserve those trees by locating the streets and the building infrastructure in such a way that we could preserve more than just six of those trees. And if you go down to the bottom of the page, there's another chart that actually confirms that of the tree preservation, all the way to the bottom, there are only, if I'm reading this correctly, there are only six trees. There you are. Six heritage trees that are preserved in the entire site. So I believe that doesn't meet the criteria for a PUD approval, and it concerns me very much. So I'm just offering that comment to the trustees and to the developer.
Yeah, and obviously, we've worked very diligently, and we've received a lot of feedback relative to trees. We certainly have PEA speak to it. We took that very seriously, and we've made a lot of changes to preserve as many trees as we can. However, I believe our intent, which it follows, is the tree preservation and replacement ordinance in the city, or in the township. I believe we're following that, and if we are, that's usually the guiding principle, isn't it? Wouldn't it be?
I think the main piece is that those chart, the final chart is inaccurate. Brett Hollensworth, PEA Group, the professional engineer for the project here. The planners have noted that the plans only indicate four trees, or 44 trees are preserved here. That's definitely wrong. I did a rough count, and we've got at least 249 in that ballpark. So I can't speak specifically to the number of heritage trees that are preserved because I just can't do that off of the plans that I have currently, but just knowing that that scale factor is off from 44 to 240-plus, then, you know, I couldn't tell you for certain, but there's, we've probably got more heritage trees that are being preserved than six. But as they've mentioned, in line with the tree preservation, we're following the other guidelines in terms of the replacements of the trees to provide additional trees to the site. And as the planners have noted in their report, that there's 800 and some additional trees that were coming onto the site, so.
Well, just so you know, that when, you know, whenever you come back, it'll be an issue that we'll look at more closely, give you an opportunity to sort of double-check the data there, and we'll be looking at it. Would you agree with that assessment?
Me?
Yeah.
I'm uncomfortable with the present status, and I would, personally, before I would be willing to approve it for my vote to go to preliminary site plan approval, I'd want to see updated numbers. And I also believe that while the plan is presented, meets the letter of the law of the Township Tree Replacement Proposal, the tree, her, tree retention, I don't believe it meets the spirit of the, of the plan. And I, you know, you guys have made so much progress on the street portion of this and how you've been handling that. I just don't get a feeling at this point that you've dedicated the same level of resource and concentration on... and concentration on trying to address the tree preservation issue. Now, I want to emphasize, I'm only one person on this commission, and others very well may see it differently, but just that's my personal concern.
Absolutely, and we've always shown a collaborative nature in our efforts. We have put a tremendous amount of effort into the tree preservation, which we'll certainly take another look at, and I apologize if we didn't have the correct information, since not that it wouldn't have changed the trajectory of the conversation, but we'll definitely make sure we have the right information, and we'll look at what we can do. We've spent a lot of time on it, but I believe in theory, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know who's the right person to speak to it, that's a PUD eligibility question, which we've already, I believe, overcome that hurdle through the eligibility process. So now this is more about the site plan, and it's about the site plan and its adherence to the tree ordinance would be the governing body. Now, of course, if we can meet the tree ordinance and save as many trees, that's obviously our goal. We've said from the beginning, we all benefit by more trees. So we'll take another look at it and make sure we put our best foot forward.
I have a question for the gentleman from PEA.
Yes, sir.
What is the difference between a total heritage tree and a total exempt heritage tree?
Would you be able to speak to that? I apologize.
Sure, I'm happy to explain. So, an exempt heritage tree is a tree that is of an undesirable species that is larger than 18 inches in diameter. So we require that desirable heritage trees like oaks be, you know, replaced at the one-to-one ratio, but if it's an undesirable species, it can be replaced at the regular tree ordinance four-to-one ratio. So for example, black locust is one tree species that the township has established as undesirable, just due to the, you know, fire hazard and falling hazard of black locusts. So one of those, even if it was 18 inches in diameter or greater, would only have to be replaced at the four-to-one tree diameter ratio rather than one-to-one. Does that make sense?
Another question. What about mail as far as, are you talking gang boxes? And how does it differ from the apartments to the condos? How will mail be delivered?
So the postmaster dictates that. Historically, there are gang boxes, you know, even on large, single-family homes and new developments. I would say for the last 10-plus years, you know, mailbox at your curb, single or even double boxes or quads, you just don't see that anymore. As a developer, we do not control that, the local postmaster controls it. In the six states I've operated in the last probably 15, 12 years or so, it's always been gang boxes.
What about the apartments?
The apartments, I don't know if we have the McReo, Pomroy. Thank you, guys. I don't know if we have the floor plan for the clubhouse, but there's a mail room and a package area for, you know, Amazon package delivery, and that's all consolidated within the clubhouse.
Got it.
We have the red room. The main house interior.
Okay.
Picture, no floor plan.
So the apartment tenants have to come in to the clubhouse to get mail every day?
Yeah, there's a separate entrance that you lead up, kind of right-hand side of the clubhouse, which would be a separate access to the mail and package room.
What about electronic vehicle charging? Are there any plans for any of it?
I guess preliminary at this point, we, you know, have conduit to certain areas, and we've pre-planned to have either conduit or, you know, the wiring available in the garage units. So we have 90 garage spaces for 266 units of apartments, so those would have the ability to have. So if someone had an electric car, it would be an incentive for them to get a garage if they could have a charger, and then certainly as the technology advances. And we've done this in a lot of our senior housing projects where we have conduits that are stubbed out in different locations in the parking lot. So if and when the future dictates that we need those, we can kind of plug into the grid without having to rip the entire project apart.
In your site plans on the main floor apartments, it shows six garages per unit or per building?
There's 12, there's six on either side.
Right. What determines, I know there's got to be more than 12 tenants, does the apartment go with certain square feet or bedroom sizes, or are those à la carte type?
The garages are access to anyone that's in, you know, in that building. I guess they could be in a separate building, but they're not dedicated to particular units, so it'd be a charge, you know, if it's a couple hundred dollars a month to have, to rent the garage space. So you'd be able to park on, you know, that first floor and then walk up to your second-story unit.
Right. There's no service elevators or any of...
No, these are three-story blocks.
Got it.
Are there storage facilities?
I'm sorry?
Do you have storage facilities for the apartments?
There's just storage within the units, but not a separate dedicated.
Okay. What about bike lockers? Anything like that planned?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Oh, bike lockers.
Bike lockers?
Mm-hmm.
We've looked at some different bike, you know, storage, there's different motorized racks and different things that you can do. Sometimes those are, usually those are in the clubhouse area. You know, people, people that ride their bike, in Michigan, you have a handful of months that you can actually do that, and the rest of the time it's a nuisance and you need a place to store it. So we've, some of our projects, we have a dedicated place within the clubhouse or near an outbuilding, we do, and then, you know, kind of a covered area for people to securely lock their bikes up, but not in each individual apartment unit. So, you know, the feedback about having bike locks around buildings is good, and that's something that we'll work with our architect and planner about, you know, different options. So we'll be able to work through, you know, we, it's one thing to say, yes, bike locks, but then what are we going to use, and how are they going to look, and, you know, are they out of the way from the sidewalk, those kind of things? So those are the kinds of things that we're going to, we want to take the feedback tonight and take that back with our team and then work with staff and certainly, you know, the tree survey piece. I know that our prior PUD option, we had listed the numbers of heritage trees, so if that's available anywhere, certainly that will be top priority, is getting that tree count accurately updated. It's significantly more than that, and so we'll clean that up.
Does your company typically manage the property in addition to building them too?
Our management company is focused on the senior housing healthcare, and usually our multifamily projects are managed by a third-party apartment management company. We have about five different management companies that on a, just a third-party fee basis manage for us.
I'm not sure who can answer this question, Ms. Wolf, maybe you can or the engineer. They're taking out any oak trees, there's certain times of the year when that can be done. You know, when those months are, I know we had a lot of discussion about this years back, and how does that fit into whatever the construction timeline is?
You mean, what months of the year can oak trees be removed?
It spreads a, it spreads a disease to the other ones that would remain if it's done at the wrong time of the year.
Oak wilt or something?
Oak wilt, that's, yeah, to prevent the oak wilt.
I'll have to check on the exact months for you. I don't have my top...
I didn't hear you.
I'll have to check on the timeframes for you, I don't have them off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Typically, landscape companies recommend that you remove branches and oak trees only during the winter months, because as soon as the trees start to warm up, the sap flows and attracts insects, and it's a very detrimental disease, it spreads really quickly and will quickly kill oak trees.
And we wouldn't want to, you know, kill the ones we want to keep, getting rid of the ones that don't fit into the, into the plan. So that's something for you folks to consider.
Yeah, so not Brett, I think that, but PEA, their landscaping, engineering department, and we would certainly work with staff and really flush that issue out.
And who maintains the, this main road? Both of you or the residents in some way, or how is the snow, the snow removal, the whole?
Yeah, private drivers, it would be the responsibility of the, kind of the homeowners on the townhome side, the homeowners association, and to the apartment project as a whole to share the costs.
But the group that's charged with managing, the way the structure will work is, the apartment group will own the road, they will maintain the road, and there'll be an agreement between the apartment company, Pomroy, and the HOA, the HOA will fund their fair share, but there'll be a single operator of it.
It's been agreed on the total cost, but the responsibility of the execution...
Operation and maintenance will be Pomroy.
Other questions or concerns that you might have before we open up for, we typically don't have a public hearing at this stage of approval process, but there's been a lot of interest, this particular, the nearby residents, so it's not a formal public comment, but is there anyone here that wishes to speak to the commission? If you would, you folks can sit down for right now.
Thank you.
If you could come up and introduce yourself, and you have three minutes to, and if anyone else wants to follow with him, you could just wait along the side of the wall.
Hello, my name is Jay Stiel, and I'm on Waverly Drive on the north side of this development. I've talked to the group several times before. I see a lot of good suggestions in the presentation, and I looked at this last week, and as a resident of the township, I would like to be able to see the whole package. All I got to see was the engineering report, so that tree information that Tim brought up, I couldn't find that anywhere, as we used to get the whole packet was in there, their entire proposal, this was just snippets from the engineering report, so...
You looked on the website or you come in or where did you look?
I looked on the packet, I get a link that tells me the packet's been updated, and usually it's all in the packet.
Yeah, there's another spot on the website we can email to you, the link, it's on...
So it's also available on the second floor at all times in person, but sometimes...
Yeah, I work longer than this building is available.
We'll try to get it up on the website.
It's like I rely on that website, and it's always been there, so I didn't, I didn't look elsewhere, I looked up and down, but I didn't see anything. But we've used them in my town.
Under development, under current projects.
Okay. Maybe a link somewhere that says we can find that there would be great, when it's always been in that other location. Again, I brought up early on, this is the biggest piece of land near downtown Plymouth in the township. We've already built a lot of things around there, and I've asked this group and the board of trustees, please spend some time in this area before you approve all these things. I've lived the Long Ann Arbor Trail between Hagerdy and Lilly for 21 years. I've seen exponential growth in cars and decrease in safety in that time. It's really concerning to me. It's my neighbor holding his son back there. This is a big deal for us. We talk about this private road, public road, is it just an ownership thing? And then who is going to control these narrow cuts that they actually get done? I've seen many suggestions that I don't think are in the plan, that we suggest from the board of trustees and this group, that they get lost somewhere without public information. I would love to know some of those things as we go forward. As far as preliminary approval, I don't know what all the stages are, but when I look at 13 concerns in the engineering report, all the concerns from this group that we haven't seen, other than they'll take a look at it. And then Tim's concerns about the tree, which obviously that information is just not correct. What other information is not correct? I don't think we need to move forward with preliminary approval when we have all of these open items that we don't know if they're going to be concerned with them or not. I think group needs to review those things as, yes, we're going to do this, no, we're not going to do this. That's what I would like to see done before we just move forward with whatever preliminary approval allows us to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, Anna Steele. I'm his. In regards to some of the information, I sound great, and you guys have been working with some of the concerns. One of the things today, we talked about the traffic calming measures with this pinch point, speed bumps were brought up before.
If you can address us.
Speed limits were brought up before. I haven't heard anything about that. Speed bumps were brought up before, haven't heard anything about that. And the curve on the road heading out to the north is not even shown on the diagram. So I'd like to know if that's staying consistent, what are the changes there? That's really important because that impacts that entire neighborhood, and that will have a huge impact on Ann Arbor Trail, which we've asked, we studied Ann Arbor Trail between Hagerdy and Lilly, and it hasn't. So that's a huge concern. The, and if you look at site plan, page 35E, if you could pull that up.
I think those are my drawings, Bob.
Okay, while you're working on that, the decks that face the north side, we had discussed, or the original plans were that there were going to be no steps coming down into the yard, into those backyards, because that is adjacent to these yards and that they were not going to do that. That was a Toll Brothers commitment. If they're going to do that, are they going to put anything besides a berm or a fence? The berm and the fence weren't discussed at all today. And again, it's not even showing on some of the drawings, that north side, at all. This additional perimeter to the north and the east, I'd be very interested to understand, maybe that's a question, you know, you're saying direct questions to you, but the north and east additional perimeter, what does that mean? What does that look like? What will that be?
What do you, I don't understand when you're saying perimeter, how, what are you, how are you using that? If you can define that for me.
Well, it was in your report.
I think that Ms. Steele is referring to the additional landscaping, the native seed mix, is that what you're talking about, additional tree preservation, buffering?
Got it, okay, now I understand what you're...
So a little more detail regarding that, especially what that's going to be, what that's going to look like, where is that going to be in reference to a berm or a fence?
You're out of time, but I'll give you another minute or so.
Well, can you pull up that drawing, please?
I don't, I'd be happy to, but I don't know where, what you're referring to.
It was the, it was page 35.
This is page 35.
The packet's page 35.
Yeah.
Your tab all the way to the top left.
E, letter E.
Storm drainage?
Site paving.
Pardon me?
Site paving, E, letter E.
E, E, I thought you said D.
Nope, E. So my question is, that road that we're discussing, being private and public road, that area that would come out onto Firwood, has that been addressed yet with Wayne County?
We'll have to ask the applicant.
Well, I understand, but we've discussed it multiple times with the board of trustees and then with the applicant, and it was not originally their intention to open that up and pave that entire area. The problem with opening it up is that we're going to be creating traffic straight from Ann Arbor Road to Ann Arbor Trail. That's the big concern there. There's also been, I don't know if your engineering report, on East Side, recently, within a month or so, they've been having the Thornton Plumbing Companies out there digging up the roads because of sewage issues in that area. So it's something to look into because it's already a problem. So would there be a way for us, and I understand you're saying we don't normally do this, but the issues that we have aren't even, don't seem either significant, other than the tree issues, which John has brought up multiple times, aren't really being addressed.
Okay, I, well, you're more than out of time. I really have to object to your comment about that, you know, we're not paying attention because we are, we spent, you know, a very lengthy meeting, was full here, we're having another public hearing that typically we don't do, so we certainly are interested in hearing the comments. Some of them, we can't do anything about them. The, for example, the sewer issue you just mentioned, I mean, they haven't even put a shovel in the ground yet, so I don't know how, whatever that issue is relates to what's before us.
Well, it does if that becomes public road going through there.
Uh-huh.
Their, Wayne County has to approve what's going to go through there, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that was my question, has that been addressed?
Whether or not Wayne County has been approached, we'll ask the applicant that. They can't move forward until they have all the Wayne County approvals.
I understand that.
Okay.
They have...
They have been approached.
Oh, you know that?
I do, I've talked to the Director of Engineering for Wayne County.
Well, we'll ask the applicant and see if that's an accurate statement.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, if the applicants can come up, maybe you can address the first thing, is the Wayne County, you know, where do you stand with that? And the steps from the deck.
Just to clarify this, Township Engineers that are coordinating with, we'll see Jeremy?
Have been coordinating with Wayne County more than we have, so we've been working certainly with Spalding, but it's been at the direction and cooperation with Spalding and the county, so I don't know if, you might speak to one.
Do you have an update on that?
I cannot speak to the specifics, because as you said, it's mostly been Jeremy Schroth, the Township Engineer directing on all that. Unfortunately, he could not make the meeting today. I do not know the status of the neighborhood development to the north, but I'm sure as soon as the Township grants approval to Spalding to start on those engineering documents, all these issues are going to be vetted out and addressed at the time.
And the discussion that we heard about the steps off the decks on that north side?
Yeah, we've had lots of discussions, you know, I don't recall if we landed one way or the other, we tend to be fairly indifferent to it, I think it does make a more practical backyard to be able to use it, without having to go out your front door or garage and walk all the way around. I would tend to think most of the neighbors have decks or patios, and they're able to access their backyard, so it would be same same. You know, I don't know that we made a commitment that we would or wouldn't do that. I know there was dueling preferences from the group between either it was commission or the board and/or the neighbors, whether there were or were not steps. You know, also we closed it without, so I think we're fairly indifferent. But, you know, normal situations would be stairs off the back of a patio, or access off a patio, or a deck into your rear yard, just like all of our homes probably have that, so it would be a limiting factor to somebody else versus, it's not same same, if you will.
And I think it would be an issue, as we go through the approval process, to deny certain people, you know, in this development access to their backyard, where their adjoining neighbors have access to theirs, so...
We strive for same same wherever possible.
Yeah, you have someone had a question down here?
And then there was another, well, I'm sorry.
About the curb being on...
Yeah, the curb, we worked with Jeremy and Spalding and some others on traffic calming, speed humps, speed bumps, those were all discussed, and it sounds like from the traffic engineers and from the engineers in general, the pinch points were the most effective calming for speed versus speed humps, speed bumps, or other mechanisms. That narrows the neck down, and, you know, traffic study, I have traffic studies, that's the best way, is the fear of damaging your car was the best route for traffic calming. I believe that's the reason why we went the route we did. Again, I'm not an engineer, but based on the meetings I was part of, that was why we came to that conclusion for speed bumps. But they had the same desired effect.
So I have another question for the engineer, so I, am I correct in presuming that the fire department looked at these pinch points, and he can get the, has fire trucks and equipment through that narrow?
Yeah, that's correct. Based on the report that I saw from the fire department, they looked at all the access routes around the development and have approved, or I think they put passed, in all their requirements for this, for these roadways.
Let me ask kind of an obvious question. Instead of having pinch points, why wouldn't you just make the road narrower?
Well, the roadway is required to be 26 feet per the fire department regulations, and that's for fire truck access around the site. And the 26 feet is a part of the Township standards as well.
But the fire engines can get through the pinch points, correct?
Correct, but it more has to do with their ability to navigate around and have access to fire hydrants on the side.
Yeah, turn radius, right?
All right. I would think I would hamper them when they're, when they have to turn in somewhere, they would probably need a wider radius to turn the, those trucks. I just had to ask.
But the Fire Marshal's signed off on what we've submitted to date.
I'm still, I'm uncomfortable with the tree inventory, I'm kind of with Tim on that, on that one. And what about the perimeter issues that were raised, you know, the wildlife approach to that, do you have any?
Absolutely, so, you know, we've had lots of conversations on trying to preserve as many of the perimeter trees on the east boundary and the north boundary as possible. If you recall, the first version of our plan had, I believe, a setback that was half, almost 20 feet shorter. We increased it to, I believe, 50 feet from 30 to try to save as many trees as we could. Our goals always were as equally interested in saving trees to buffer against the neighbors as well, not because we don't like our neighbors, it's just everyone likes a home that backs to trees versus backs to another home. But the challenge is, until we can get to final engineering, it's really difficult to say what trees we can and cannot save, because you have storms who are running in the back, you may have utilities, we have grading items that we have to determine, so that to me is more, we can certainly put something forward that shows, based on what we know today, how much we can truly save, but until we get past preliminary and get into truly final engineering, we won't really be able to determine with absolute certainty what trees can and cannot be saved. But it's always been our commitment, as shown based on passer of, you know, enhancements to the community, like I said, going from a 30-foot to a 50-foot, rear setback on those units made a huge difference. You know, it's almost 50%, it's 66% deeper than it was before. So yeah, so we absolutely plan to change that, or show it, it's just, it's difficult to do when we're in two-dimensional statuses, we're in a preliminary versus final, final engineering.
I have a follow-up question on the trees. How long would it take you to document with complete accuracy the information on the tree preservation plan, and come back, and if we were to table the proposal tonight, how quickly could you get back to us with the final documentation on that?
Final, final, as you mentioned, we won't know exactly, maybe down to just a week. Yeah, yeah, but what we got right now, in a week.
Been a week?
Yeah, we have the information, it's just unfortunately somehow they're transposed onto the planning correctly, and we apologize for that.
Well, then my follow-up question is to Laura and Nanny. The submission date for the August Planning Commission meeting's already passed, it was Monday the 18th, if I'm reading this chart right. Could we grant them a few days of consideration to file an update if we were to table the proposal tonight, so that they can come back at next Planning Commission meeting and present the final correct information on trees?
We could accept a submission for August, since there isn't the formal notification with the public hearing required for this use at this time. I would like to note, though, that, you know, similar to how the commission has treated other applications in the past, tentative site plan, you know, per the ordinance confers approval of the proposed layout and general landscape areas, it's not a finalization of those elements. And in some cases, you know, the landscape plan for other developments has needed modifications, you've made conditions upon that approval, so just cautioning to treat this application the same way for tentative only.
Yeah, it is something that we have done at, just at tentative level, and then they, you know, our staff will review it, and if there's a concern, I think, I think we both share the same concern, if there are these heritage trees that are not being saved, and they're in the middle of somebody's living room, then there's a discussion that needs to be made about that. Is that where you're going with this?
I just, I don't feel like the plan is presently proposed. If those numbers are directionally correct, we've established they're not the exact numbers, but I need to know more what the numbers are with a reasonable accuracy to be able to be in favor of this plan, and I just worry that if the numbers aren't significantly, I mean, you're talking about tearing down, destroying 155 of the 161 largest trees in that site. If the number ends up being, you know, not that much different, I just don't feel like the plan as presently proposed is something I'm comfortable supporting. So it's like a key piece of the puzzle that I just don't have confidence in right now. And granted, Laura, I understand what the normal process is, and I understand the rest of the commission is perhaps more experienced on this than I am, and I understand that they may see it differently, that's just my view as one commissioner.
I agree with Commissioner Boyd totally. I think they've done an inadequate presentation on the tree preservation and replacement, and I don't think they're ready for any kind of approval.
This is a tentative approval, is what you're saying?
I would just like to say, I think we've shown an amazing amount of malleability and flexibility and resiliency to feedback, and, you know, this has been a seven-month process to get to this point, which I think we'd all agree is exceedingly long, and I think the good faith we should have, and goodwill we should have created, there should be some, there has to be trust already built between these two bodies and the public. We've come a long way on this plan, and I think stalling it is not productive, I think having a thoughtful conversation utilizing what's been a historical precedent of a tentative approval, that then has conditions, so we can come back at final to demonstrate that, that's a logical step. Coupled with, I think I would like to understand a little bit more, because it's my understanding that there's a tree ordinance. And with a tree ordinance, can a plant be voted up or down if it's adhering to the tree ordinance? Because if it could be voted down, if I'm understanding correctly, why have a tree ordinance? It's then left to discretion, and the whole point of an ordinance is to give bookends and give people goalposts to work within, and as far as I know, we're, our erroneous information, that's on us, 100%, I apologize, because you can't give it a thoughtful conversation. Shame on us with that, but at the end of the day, if we're following the tree ordinance, isn't that the guiding principle behind the process? I'm just, I'm asking, I'm not telling, I don't know, it's my understanding that is the process. Is that something we could answer, so we're all at least understanding what the rules of engagement are?
Laura, do you want to take that one on, about the relationship between the tree ordinance and the development?
We've already passed PUD eligibility, so that's an eligibility requirement, I think we've already, we've overcome that hurdle, so it's not on PUD eligibility at this point, it's a site plan question.
I would defer to the Township Attorney for correction on this, but the Board of Trustees' approval for the PUD option, you know, was, was subject to further refinement of the plans, and that included traffic calming measures, conservation easements, other public benefits, you know, among others. So I think working, working with the developer on confirming, confirming the trees that are proposed to be, to be removed, and working with them to see if there's additional trees that can be saved through this process, would be the next step, and then presenting that to the Planning Commission. If at that point, you find that it's not acceptable, then that would be a further table, until you could grant them either final or recommend denial of final.
And what is the latitude of the discretion? That's what I'm trying to understand, because if there's a tree in the middle of a building, because density's been a big conversation, and we've worked hard to reduce the density down below the guidelines, so what I always wrestle with, that's a goalpost, there's density requirements are allowed on the site, we're below the density requirement, to meet the density requirement, trees have to be removed. So when I follow that logic tree, if trees have to be then be removed because we're below the density, that's allowable, then the next hurdle would be the tree ordinance, which would then be the governing body, or governing document behind it. So is it that ordinance, which if it is, then if, as long as we're following the tree ordinance, I would think, I'm just trying to get rules of engagement, so we can go back to our plans and understand it, because if that's it, then that, I think, is very black and white, and I think that's what most municipalities would want, is a black and white program, if it's discretionary. We've spent nine months, a lot of money and a ton of time, and we've already passed that PUD eligibility question and satisfied it, that I don't believe that was a condition to the Board of Trustees' approval. So then, is it just, again, I keep coming back to, is it discretionary, or, because I hear a lot of concern, and we don't disagree with the concern, or I hate to come this far, go through PUD eligibility to find out we have a plan that's not approved, or the density gets chopped significantly because of a discretionary concern as opposed to a guided ordinance concern?
The Board of Trustees already have approved the PUD, so I think we're past that point about PUD eligibility. If there was any issue, it would have been brought up at the trustee meeting.
Correct.
But let me ask you this question, it's a little bit off topic, but, so you saw the report, and you heard about the concerns about the trees, what is your timeline to be ready for a final approval on this?
Several weeks. Probably about three weeks to account for most of the comments that were addressed.
Okay, so Laura, what, and I'm also asking Tim and others that have a concern about the, about the trees, what if we, I don't know, what's the right term, tabled it, or postponed it, or whatever, and when they come back, when they're ready for final, we give them tentative and final at that time? And then that eliminates any undue delay in the, in the project, but still addresses the concerns that have been raised. I think we could do that, we also have not, the streetlight issue was just sort of sudden, well, we do coach lights, and, but the board, or the commission didn't really comment on that, on that recommendation. We can talk about that. Yeah.
Again, I'm looking for specific guidance, and again, I'm a former military person, I'm very, I like rules, and arbitrary, arbitrary, arbitrary guidance is really difficult in these settings, we do these all the time, and we love the fact that, and I keep harping on it, and I apologize if I'm a broken record, but there's a tree ordinance, and it's, you're right, the PUD eligibility has been satisfied, and if that's relative to trees and the heritage, that's already been satisfied, so to me, that's a moot point, that's the rules of engagement. So then, what is the next rule of engagement if it's a tree ordinance? Then we just have to satisfy the concern that we have met the tree ordinance requirements, which doesn't say you can't remove heritage trees, it says you have to replace them if you do, correct?
It does.
So if that's, that's what I keep coming back to, so I agree, we want to save as many trees as we can, but if it's sitting in the middle of a road, that can't be moved, if it's sitting in the middle of a house, that can't be moved, or it's going to be damaged when we grade the site to the point where it can't be saved, or it will eventually die, which we know that happens, that's why we follow the tree ordinance, and we do our best coming out of the kids. And I hear a lot of concern about trees, we want to address them, we will, I'm not ignoring the concern, but I just want to make sure we're on the same page, the tree ordinance, or does the tree ordinance govern the decision? Or is there somebody can answer that? That would be my big question.
I have a question for Laura. Was, okay, and was approving the PUD, was saving a certain number of heritage trees part of that? Was that a condition of the PUD?
There wasn't a quantitative number that was determined, since they're required to have a concept plan, it's more for the general location of buildings, the density, the proposed uses, those type of elements. So in moving forward, there's no question that the tree ordinance has to be met, and that, that has to happen. But I think what, what also needs to happen next is to have a conversation, understanding if there are potential trees that could be saved by moving a building slightly. Not asking for removal of a building, that's already been granted by the Board of Trustees, but if there are modifications that can improve that and get it closer to the intent of that PUD eligibility and the PUD option, then...
Yeah, and that's absolutely our willingness, you know, moving it a degree or two, absolutely, you know, turning it tremendously, because our landscape plan, including the tree survey, was part of the package that went before the Board of Trustees. And again, I don't believe that came up as an issue, because again, I believe, I believe we talked about it, because we're adhering to the tree ordinance, so I remember. So yes, we will absolutely, please don't take my discussion as we don't want to do anything, it's just, I like a pathway, that's all. There were a couple of things that were brought up that I think I could answer, there was the alignment of the road heading to the north and adjoining with the northern neighborhood, that has not changed, the trajectory, the alignment of it, the curve of it, that has not changed. Did I get everything that you brought up? I know we're supposed to talk to each other, but we've been working together for a while, so I just want to make sure you have your answers.
Remember the berm situation? So did that point to be in front of this additional, whatever space you're going to talk about, about the pollinators or?
Well, along the northern border, there was quite a gap of trees, there were no trees. So there was a berm with trees, or a fence, I don't remember exactly where we landed, it's on the site plan. And then it terminates where the trees start to pick up again at the east and west end of it. Our goal's always been to preserve those trees at the east and west corners of the property as much as possible, I think we actually removed units on the west side of the townhome component to kind of keep, there's a huge clutch of trees right there. They're not the highest quality of trees, quite frankly, but they create pretty amazing screening, similar situation on the east side.
But I agree with that, but that's different than what we discussed, but you didn't, I don't know what's in the site plan, because I haven't been able to find it. But that's changed several times, and you've got to make sure we're all agreeing on it.
So maybe I can add up?
Yeah, it's on our site plan, and we can certainly address it, but, yeah. Whatever we agreed to in the past is still there. Again, this has been a seven-month process with lots of gaps in between it. This is very typical, so we can't keep it all top of mind. I wish we had easy access to the site plan. What does the site plan show in the north end?
On the front side, we've got a four-foot height for the majority of the townhome portion of the site. On the eastern side, northeast corner, where the trees start to pick up, as you mentioned, that's where we had an eight-foot fence installed there.
In addition to that, there's a 60-foot easement, conservation easement, so it's good. You know, it's 10 feet to the back property land of the northern neighbors. So there's the tree line within the 60-foot easement, there's the four-foot berm that separates. So it's quite a long way, you know, it's not, it's not too large that brought up to each other, but they're very small back there. It's deeper than all residential lots.
Yeah, I don't know for this group of members, it's, like I said, lots of conversations. There's an easement north of the townhomes, which is technically the development's property. And I don't believe we made this way into the engineering port, but we are going to find a way to create, basically, an easement so it perpetuates itself as it is today. So we're not looking to build into that property, and that's beyond the berm. So you have the berm, which is south of that easement, and then you have the folks to the north and their homes and their property. So our intention is to maintain that in its current, yeah, it'd be easier if we had a visual.
And may I clarify the planner recommendation? We are recommending that the berm and any part of the easement area where the ground cover is affected be landscaped with native plants that are, you know, blooming flowers in the spring, a little bit more thick grasses so that they provide that additional visual screen, and also space for pollinators and small animals that, right now, is just going to be lawn, so.
Correct. You can see there's a couple different things, lawn.
Yeah. And again, a lot of those, yeah, that doesn't really, but long story short, yes, it's been addressed.
Chairman?
Yes?
There's a, there's an extra set of the full plans that are adjacent to the engineer. If anyone from the public would like to take them home, they're welcome to tonight.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, did you have a comment on the, on the street lighting, the intersection?
Not any, not any additional, thank you.
Oh, okay. I don't know if there's a concern about, about the lighting at the crosswalks. I have seen some developments where they do have lighting at the crosswalks, but they're almost like, they're not like a street light. They're more like landscape lighting, you know, so I don't know, they're like maybe four feet high or something like that. So they light up that area, you can see a figure standing there, obviously you might have a five to six-foot person, you know, waiting at the crosswalk, but the, a car could definitely see the person, could see the form and know there is a pedestrian approaching or in the middle of the intersection.
Like I said earlier, there will be kids walking before 6:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and it's dark at both those times. So there will be people out walking. Is this a brownfield development? No?
Maybe the other thing that there's a concern about that is looking, looking at the lighting fixtures that are on the coachlights to see how, what is the spray off that light?
Sure.
And see if there's enough really light that's being projected out into the roadway to provide safety.
Just to clarify, this subject site is a brownfield, it hasn't been submitted yet for consideration by the township, but it's in the process.
So what, what are the commission's feelings about perhaps postponing this and have them come back when they're ready for a final approval and grant a tentative and final at that one step?
I think that's too much at one step for a development of this size.
Okay, so, so you would want to come?
I'm okay with preliminary.
You're okay?
I don't think it's too much. The final approval should be, I mean, if they're going to be ready in a few weeks, why not give it a try on there?
I mean, we don't have to approve, we can just say, well, you've got the tentative approval, but you're not getting the final.
So procedurally, it would be the same thing, right? If we gave tentative approval tonight, but we don't like the final product and we don't approve it, it would be the same, effectively, the same outcome as if we denied final and tentative on the same night, correct?
Right, the purpose of tentative is that, okay, we like what we've seen generally, but there is some room for improvement, there's some questions, we provided, they've taken notes, you know, of our comments. And so they, they add finishing touches to this, and then they come back, and then we would consider final approval. And that means, you know, they get the final stamps, we're pretty happy, I mean, there still might be some landscaping issues or placement of a parking spot or something like that, some minor thing. But they're, they're approved to go ahead. So if we combine it into one, so at that point, if they're back, let's say in a month, okay, they haven't got their tentative, but they're ready, they believe that they are ready for final, our staff feel they're ready for final approval. We still have an opportunity to look at it. And if we say, no, you're not ready for final, but we feel more comfortable than we do today, so we'll grant you tentative approval, and you come back a second time for your, or it'll be the third time to come back for their final. And it, what, the advantage of that is it doesn't delay them, it allows us to go through, but we've given them a lot of detail, and I think there's a lot of concern about the trees. We'll have that information at that time, and that, maybe that would be a big stumbling block, depending on, once they get the data all corrected.
Chairman?
Yes?
You could also request an emotion to have a, in between, before the applicant would return for final, to have a meeting with the administrative review committee?
Do that, there's that administrative review committee, just to kind of look at it. That would be Laura and myself and...
The chair.
And the chair, you know, just look at it and see, and I could always report back to you. But you still come back, the final approval comes back to this group. Nothing is done behind the closed scenes or any of that stuff. It's just to make sure that they're on the right track.
And as a reminder, the final approval is a recommendation to the board.
Right, it is.
The board is the final deciding body.
Absolutely, right, right, absolutely. All of this is an approval to recommend it to the Board of Trustees. They are the ultimate deciders. So think about that approach and see.
You're saying to table preliminary?
Well, we postpone it, isn't that right, Bob?
Postpone it. I think that would, it sounds like a reasonable option.
Come back ready for tentative and final approval of a recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
Approval to recommend.
And still meet with the administrative review committee, just to be sure that things are kind of on a straight and narrow. I think that's a good approach, Laura, to have that.
What would be the timing on the administrative review committee?
It depends on when they get their...
Would that be, so it would be in between now and when?
How, and when they're, when they believe they're ready for final? And you, you think you'd be ready for an August meeting?
Not for final.
Pardon?
I don't think you have it ready because of the...
Oh, because of the timing?
We would have, yeah, we would be able to submit time.
Oh, okay.
Right? There are already guys that sit up.
I think we could be flexible with that, because there's not the required public hearing. However, if you were gonna, if you need three full weeks to revise the plans, then...
Yeah, there's pieces that are very easy, and then there's pieces that may require more study, you know, there are types of planning, you know, crosswalks and painting lines and doing those kind of things are very easy. And some of the, certainly clean up the tree survey. I know that there's an accurate version that was submitted with the prior schedule, and there was a lot of discussion about that. Our original parking site had 540 parking spaces. And through feedback from the planning commission and the Board of Trustees and all of this process, they asked, because we were trying to hit two, two per unit, we had 270 units, and the feedback was, let's reduce, we'll, we'll branch into the approval to move forward with a little over than two parking spaces per apartment, because we want to focus on tree preservation and open space. And so we really worked hard with our engineer and the planning department on removing parking spaces, dropped down to 470. So that is a challenge now to look, and are there additional places to pull parking spaces out that we've got to think about? We have 15 of those parking spaces that are for the community building. They're not going to be people that are living in one of the apartments and say, oh, I'll park over at the clubhouse. And then we have 90 spaces with garage that are only dedicated to lawn. A lot of these ratios will say, this is the, this is the number of average parking spaces for the parking garage, but that clearly lies on a supply use. Everybody has access to all parking spaces. Some people work the evening, some people are away, they're vacation, so you can fill a pin. You have 90 dedicated spaces for garage, that's my garage, no one else can park it. So you, I think I'm nervous about taking that new spaces off, but obviously really we're already taking 70 parking spaces off, regardless of the space we're going to take some away. Our original proposal said we'd like to hang our communities, maybe there's some things that we could do that we end up needing them future, that we, you know, we have some spaces that were in the bank, but we wouldn't put them in place. So our, our focus has been open space, just getting better streams, repositioned buildings, move things around with that in mind. So this is, that's like, it's time to get here. And I feel we're making some progress, but it's harder to the data all moving up. So I know we can get the tree count right here. I know we can address a lot of these relatively minor issues. So I think, my, my hope is that we can just eat this up, the planning department, they are at the administrative committee meeting soon. And then, you know, if we have a, we've got land, we're trying to issue, I'm about to see the issue, we'll have some conversation at the August meeting and fine tune it there. And again, I saw this as kind of a working meeting to get your feedback, you know, your ours, we can come back for that, you know, that kind of semantics, whether it's tentative approval tonight, final approval at the next meeting, or tentative and final, we knew that we had a point to prove that this plan is going to be your excellent.
It feels like there's a difference in trees. We've had a lot of actuarial work between this group, the Board of Trustees and staff, and we thought that had been resolved now that kids have been opened back up again. So we, we just don't need, we need to provide a narrative that shows you the history, because we've confronted, I think, this group three or four times, the Board of Trustees twice, we were meeting, meetings with, we thought the tree issue was resolved. I'm kind of shocked it's coming back up again, because I feel like we made a ton of tries, regardless of what we've done back on the tree count, so we'll get the guys on.
Laura, I have, I have a question. So, you know, when this came before the Board of Trustees and they approved the PUD, do they approve the number of units at that same time?
Yes.
So it seems, frankly, a little strange to me that, that the, that the units are set in stone, but the number of trees never was.
Well, the, the density of a site is, is typical to be established in a PUD. The building footprints can be moved slightly around, parking can be adjusted. And one of the recommendations at the time was to remove parking and to increase open space. So, I mean, there, there were some elements of that that were already in flux.
But the trees were reviewed.
Correct.
And I keep coming back to this, and I think residents who came to the Board of Trustees is, we tried to save as many trees we can through the interim process, this whole thing, we save as many as we can, and then we're following a tree ordinance. So I'm not 100% sure this is, should be that big a discussion, besides trying to save one or two here and there.
I think the big issue is that your information wasn't accurate, and now, and now we don't know what it is.
I completely agree with that, Tom.
Yeah.
But I don't know if the, but the bottom, the information you have would be no different than the information you had in the past, or was given to the Board of Trustees. Our site plan hasn't changed since then, that I don't think we moved any trees. So I don't think the outcome's going to be any different, if that makes sense?
So the, so the sheets that contain, you know, trees that'll be preserved and removed and all that, we saw this earlier, it's unchanged from the earlier submissions that you provided us?
It's on the plans today, the numbers on that, the numbers are just wrong. Like, the, the plans showed the correct information, that's why I was able to come, there were really 250 trees that were saved. The numbers were just wrong in the data, so the plans are correct. And if you want to look at the plans at a working meeting, it would be on, just those numbers, that table above, we could easily do, and I can't imagine it takes more than a day or two.
You should have to get our plan statement. But has our tree count in that table, would that have changed what went before the Board of Trustees?
No, that's, it would have only, there may have been a few changes, you know.
That's my point, that since we were before the Board of Trustees, the tree preservation plan has not changed. Because again, we've talked about there, we demonstrated all of our trees and your areas and tree ordinance. But even see this whole process held up, and I apologize that our, our plan didn't reflect our information, shame on us. But I just don't want to make much to do about, more, more to do with this than necessary. Because again, I keep coming back to, here, the tree ordinance and it's already been PUD eligibility approved, I'm not sure what that would have come to.
I think that PUD eligibility is, is dead in the water, I mean, you have that.
That's my point, we're already satisfied that we've met the heritage requirement and the eligibility, so if the issue is that heritage, i.e. trees, it's moved, it's already been discussed, it's already been approved, so.
I believe that in the Board of Trustees meeting, maybe the prior planning commission meeting, there was a section in the notes, I had been bringing prior submission packages, but there was, there was a discussion, there was a chart about how many heritage trees we had in the site, how many we were going to save, the changes that we may, you know, may have, may have taken out one tree or saved one tree, like they're, they're in the direction of, I just didn't have that yet here to be a huge, without, you guys have that.
You had a, you had a comment?
I would just like to interject, this may be a discussion that would be more appropriate at length with the administrative review committee, which has, you know, more detailed time to review these, especially with any sort of construction buffer adjustments for trees and tree areas. And I just say that because we do have another item on the agenda, so.
No, sir, sir, we want to come back and do it the right way. We do want to go forward, we want to give you guys more information, so if you can, get an informed session, so I think we're all agreeing on it.
So let me, okay, go on.
I was just going to say, what if tentative, you came back for tentative in August?
For a sentence.
And then final at a later meeting?
This was from the Board of Trustees. The fix for the trees is a pretty quick one for you? I mean, you can, you can resolve the inconsistency?
Yeah.
It could be plus or minus a couple, I think you were trying to save more with this plan that we had originally, so I'm hoping there's a few more saved. But that, this shows that we were only removing 170. With the, the township board's approval, correct?
Right.
Yeah, some of the suggestions from the planning commission were, you know, can we extend the, the over on the eastern, you know, the backyards of the toll sites, maybe used to pick up there.
So I just want to make sure that, so, let's say you came back next month, you had an accurate count of the, the whole tree thing, and then you come back and presumably you, you would get a tentative approval at that time. Then you would come back at an, at another time, would all this other detail worked out?
I guess we would prefer to jump as once. Would make these changes that have been suggested and discussed today, and then submit a package, and then have the departments review it again, and then ask our, whether if you don't give us a tentative tonight, we would ask for tentative in final or the next meeting.
And the next meeting in August, you...
I don't, hopefully we can get on that August meeting, but if we can, we would, we would certainly try.
Are there other issues, so, Tim, does this help you address this concern and others share it? So I'm not just picking on you because others do and...
If you were to table it tonight and come back for tentative review next month... If you were to table it tonight and come back for tentative review next month, or tentative and final, I would be fine with that. I just don't feel, right now, that we should provide tentative with the information we've been given tonight.
So, then my question to the rest of the commission, are there other issues, other than the landscape or the tree preservation, that they need to know today, so that they can address that when they're going to come back?
I think they should address the, uh, uh, streetlights versus, uh, the individual coach lights, and at least try and give us some comfort as to, uh, not necessarily equivalency, but adequacy.
Or, or combination.
I mean, that needs to be addressed if they want to get it settled quickly.
You could always come up with a, you know, the lighting plan, you know, to show how far out.
The photometric plan is in the package already.
Oh, okay.
Based on how we proposed it. I don't know how, to be honest, it's not an easy thing to read and understand.
It didn't have the coach light specifications on, like, an example of the coach lights on the sheet, so that's really what we would be asking for.
It should have been added because the engineer asks for our specifications.
Oh, maybe, are the, are the apartment exterior packs the same as the townhome exterior packs? Does anyone know?
So we.
Okay, so maybe we'll still have to clarify that.
And we will, if there's a reference, we, we don't want that to hold up if we're forced to reflect, like, we think it's pretty good to be coached light, but if.
Well, streetlights or, uh, I don't know how the commission feels, something like, like the landscaping, you know, the four foot, you know, how you see in people's foundation plannings, you know, things like that, pathway lights, and.
We can address that type of need by line of engineering, to be quite frank. I don't know, I've never had that in the preliminary, which is what this line line.
Well, that's if you come back for tentative and final. I, I just don't want to have any speed bumps.
If it's, you know, planned, and they would like that, and it's in the recommendation from the planning department, then, then we would be willing to do that. We just gave you what we would typically do as working tasks. Those are the principles.
I can clarify.
Yeah.
Um, if they are proposing coach lighting in only the townhome portion of the development, that is fine with the planning department. Uh, we are most concerned with the streetlight, you know, oppositional alignment along the spine road where there's those mid-block crossings. Those are the ones that have the highest chance of pedestrian vehicle conflict, whereas the ones that are situated far away in the center of the townhome side are much less of a concern, and the coach lights, if done sufficiently throughout the entire townhome area, would solve that problem, so.
Yeah, no, I'm referring to the spine road one, because I think that's where there would be more crossing.
Everywhere the spine.
Okay.
That makes some sense.
Also, the rear elevation of the townhouses really hasn't been talked about, other than the windows, um, it not being cost effective to have them black in the back, but I haven't seen any, like, increased or improved architectural detail in the back of the townhouses.
All the recommendations that were made by staff, we would otherwise do a hundred percent. So they, they recommended for the back, not the, the house, we would be willing to do that, and then the stairs from the back, those were the architecture.
Okay.
Is there a strong feeling on, again, our, what we would typically do, which doesn't have to be what we do, is when we have black windows, they would not be installed where you wouldn't see them on the streets. The light is really long, so if you're coming up the road, the, the main center road, going north on, you can see the end of that first building. We would put black windows there, allowing not to be front to the side, but you would see the rear of them. But they conversely, if at the next stage of, of townhomes, you have a park, where the home's back to it, you can see those windows, they would be black. Um, now that probably complicates it, but our role, that, you know, we try to be as logical as we can, so that's okay, fine, and then we would provide, at the next plan, a high visibility unit plan that would say, these are highlight units, and these are high visibility, they will have black windows in these spots, but if the easy button is just to go black, again, this has been seven months, we, we want to keep, we're not going to partake of it. Um, so is there guidance from the planning person?
Thoughts from all of you guys?
I think what you said sounds good.
It sounds to me like a reasonable approach.
We'll give you a very easy to follow guide, you know, site plan, we do all, we do internally problems, so that, we'll have that for the next package. Thank you.
Any other guidance that you would want from us?
Um, are we using the, the administrative committee meeting schedule, are there certain days or?
Uh, it's usually between eight AM and noon on weekdays, and that's because the planning department is a part-time department, so.
And it closes on Friday or?
No, not necessarily, we close on holidays, but we're open on Fridays.
Is everyone here that would be not here, or should pick a date now to do it?
Well, Jeremy Schrot, the primary engineer on the project, is not here today, but we could schedule it, you know, tomorrow.
It doesn't usually take very long, if, if you folks get your, I would come up with two, two dates and times, or maybe even three, and, and it usually does work out, so, doesn't take long to, to schedule them. So what's the feeling about the doing tentative and postponing it? We can give them up to ninety days to come back? Uh, they can come back sooner if you're ready? Um, so, anybody object to that, or?
I think they've met, there are some questions about the trees, but I think in relation to other applications, they qualify for tentative.
So are you suggesting we grant them tentative tonight?
Um, I'll make the motion.
I, I don't see procedurally how it would make a difference if we grant, because it's not final.
It isn't.
My only question would be, is there something that they can't do because they don't have tentative? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That there's something that, is it, is it a blocking point not to have tentative site plan approval?
I think, uh, so, in the township, historically, there's always been the tentative and then the final development, and the tentative approval gives the applicant a sense of continued investment in refining their plans. Um, I mean, in some situations, even the, it's just been a very rough, rough architectural drawings that have been approved for tentative, and in this case, you know, the applicant has complete floor plans, and so there's definitely been a lot already invested, and these are much more complete than some tentative plans the township has approved.
Yeah, I only suggested, you know, postponing because, you know, there was the suggestion that, well, don't do anything today, you know, postpone and have them come back and do the trees.
Always good suggestion.
You know, I, I, I would support the other, you know, the tentative tonight and.
If it procedurally doesn't make.
It doesn't really make much difference. Uh, I mean, we don't want to, uh, I mean, they have invested a lot of time and money in this, I don't want to see them, um, slow down in any way and dealing with the county and the time that that takes, and, but I, I, I don't, I don't have any objection to granting tentative today, I would prefer that actually, if that, if the others feel that way.
I would.
Okay, well, why don't you make a motion then?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant tentative site plan approval to, um, PC application two four four four, the Plymouth Walk PUD.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Itzot.
Just a question.
Tentative final, a tent, tentative approval, go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, um, we grant tentative site plan approval, but if there is something that is a showstopper of all the recommendations, and they just come back and say, no, we're not doing that, we would have the ability to not grant the recommendation for final site plan approval, that's our lever, right?
They would need to comply with the recommendations in the, in the, in the motion, as well as the ordinance. So the recommendations, the planning report, the engineering report, and anything else that you'd like to add, as well as the ordinance, and then if they don't comply with those when you, when they come back, then you could either table or deny.
Yeah.
You should add to, to the motion, to, to grant tentative final approval, uh, subject to the, um, recommendations of the planning report and an accurate, uh, tree count.
Okay, I'll mention my motion to include, um, subject to the items in the McKenna report, the engineering report, and an accurate, uh, tree count.
And you agree?
I'll second it.
Okay, so that's all been approved. Any other questions on that? If not, we'll take a vote, all in favor of granting tentative site plan approval, subject to site conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay, so we have two oposals, Commissioner, uh, Postel and Boyd.
Okay, so the motion passes.
But the motion passes. Okay, well, good luck to you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next. Next is application twenty four twenty three, the town, uh, center carpet and floor signage and report.
Yes. This application, um, for the new sign, the art signage, um, for the new town carpet center and floors establishment, um, is the same from your June packet. Um, this was put on the agenda in hopes that the applicant would, uh, appear tonight and provide some additional information to the commission. They are not in attendance, so we would ask that this just be tabled again, unfortunately.
Uh, so we'll just, uh, what do you suggest, just tabling it, or?
Up to ninety days, or?
Definitely.
Postponing it, tabling, no, we're not going to table, postponing it?
Post, postponing it.
Okay, for up to ninety days.
That's fine.
Okay, you want to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we postpone, um, PC application two four two three, the town center carpet and floors, for up to ninety days.
Support.
Move back Commissioner Barberina and, uh, supported by Commissioner Greger to postpone application twenty four twenty three for up to ninety days, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have the, uh, planning and the monthly report, which, I just, are there any questions or comments on this report from the commission?
I had one related to the Plymouth Ridge. Um, the latest report, um, says that the, um, the conditional rezoning application was submitted in June. Um, Laura, is that on display upstairs on the shelf next to the, um, whatever that part of the building is at the back? I'm sorry?
I think it's the water department.
Water, yeah, is, is the proposal that they've made in June twenty twenty two, is that available yet for the public to actually look at, or has it not been taken to that level?
No, it is available, I don't know if it's on the, the desk, right, uh, like in front of the counter, but if you were to ask, it would just be pulled from the back.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Laura, when, when we grant final site plan approval, how long is that good for, for the applicant to actually start doing what he or she needs to do?
It's, um, it's for one year, in which time they would need to, by the year's end, they need to secure final site, or final stamp approval, um, that includes engineering sign off, and then proceed with some sort of building permit with the building department.
So the Beleski Funeral Home was approved on July twenty first of last year.
Yes, they have, they have submitted for final stamp.
Oh, they have?
They have, yes, because this is from July fifth. So their, their engineers have, um, submitted for final stamp.
Did they make any adjustments to the design that, um, we asked them to look at? That one angle?
I have to look at the building elevations again, but yeah, I believe so, they had incorporated the conditions.
Uh, suggestions? Okay. Any other questions? Okay. And then we have the MSU, the program, the reminder to enroll.
So this is just a reminder to please do your digital enrollment and send me your confirmation, I've only gotten it from a few of the commissioners so far.
Did you get mine?
I got.
Okay, good, because I never got anything.
But yeah, or if you don't want to do it, just tell me you don't want to do it, I just want to know exactly who I'm enrolling.
Okay, when can we get started on the class?
You can get started as soon as I know who, everyone in the group, because I have to enroll you all as a batch, so that's why I need to know who's ready to go, and then I can start, whoever wants to do the class in the online format.
Okay.
So again, if you don't want to take it, that's okay, just let me know, so I'm not waiting for your enrollment.
And then the, uh, the parking, uh, updates, so, and I think you were the one, you were the lead on this?
Yes, so, just checking in, I know it's late, do we still want to address this item today?
Uh, other than, did anyone have some initial questions, or, uh, and then maybe we can, I don't know if you, you have any idea how busy we'll be at the next month's meeting?
Laura, do you know?
Uh, we have the Plymouth Ridge, um, rezoning application, and I believe we're going to have application for the proposed Big B drive-through across from Bank of Ann Arbor.
Special land use.
Okay, uh, well, that might be a long meeting.
Okay, we could go through it briefly.
Yeah, we'll just be sure to read it, retain it, uh, and then we'll, we'll find a time, I mean, there's no urgency to this, is there?
Not necessarily, we want to go over this memo before any ordinance changes come before the planning commission for recommendation, um, but I'll give you, I'll give you the elevator pitch right now. So after discussions with township staff and with the planning chair, the township has decided to pursue an update to the parking chapter of the zoning ordinance, to bring us into alignment with, um, our neighbors who have lower parking standards to us, and as well as national standards, because as it is right now, the township is overparked in what we require of developers, and that increases both private and public costs, cost to the environment, cost for development, cost for a variety of different reasons. So that's what this memorandum talks about, um, it talks about the cost of the current parking system and what would be the benefits of an update, AKA why it's being pursued, um, and that includes new business, lower cost for building, more open space, things like that. It also talks about what would be included in the parking update, and that includes updates to the actual required figures, so, for example, a bowling alley, we currently require seven spaces per lane, whereas Canton and the national standards require four spaces per lane, so those kinds of numeric updates, as well as accommodating new parking needs like pickup lanes and shared parking, you know, providing standards for wider spaces at grocery stores, EV parking, things like that, things that weren't necessarily even on an ordinance radar radar and too well controlled when it was ordinance last updated. So that's what this memo addresses, and if you have any questions about it, you know, before the next meeting, you're also welcome to email me or call me at the township offices because I love talking about parking, so I will talk to you about parking for as long as you want.
Be sure to set aside an hour or so. All right, thank you.
Yeah, that, this is really good.
Uh, and any commissioner comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, we used to have in the front of our packet a map of, like a Google map or some kind of a picture of the site and aerial picture. Is it possible to get those again?
I can ask the administration about it, that wasn't something that we prepared. When, um, Spalding did the new GIS update, it changed everything, um, the computers and like the ability to pull from that. Um, I think for a while, it was, the old database was still being pulled from, but that was from two thousand fifteen parcel information, so a lot of times, you know, it wasn't even correct, um, what was being shown. Um, I can, I can ask, I, I'm not sure if.
Okay.
How easy it is for them to still do that.
Okay, yeah, because especially in some applications, it was really helpful, or to see the adjacent properties, um, it was really helpful, so if possible, that would be great.
So I did, I, I don't think I heard everything you said properly, so is it possible, does the engineering consultants, are they have, can they provide that information?
Well, that would be a cost to the township. The administration did that previously. It wasn't something that was done by planning staff.
You're talking about the cover sheet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I have a question. Is there our master plan, the one we've been working on, is it published, done, et cetera, or is it still being worked on?
Yeah, it's still being worked on. We have to come back to that. Maybe we can put that on the August meeting.
Actually, I was going to ask.
Did you have more additional questions?
Just about the master plan.
Oh, okay. And I'd like to make a little announcement, and maybe you would like to join me in congratulating Denise, who was recently married. Congratulations. Any other comments, concerns? If not, then are we ready for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn at 9:32.
Second that.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Edson to adjourn the meeting on 9:32. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, adjourn.